The Governor of the State of LNI has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to COVID-19 outbreak and all of the village of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of the village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the January 2022 village board meeting is not critical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the trustees of the village board participating in the January 2022 village board meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. Signed, Choudhary M. Koker, village president of the village of Glendale Heights, dated I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, January 2022 to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pocak?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will continue with petitions and communications, community announcements. Trustee Schmidt, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Police Department, along with numerous other police departments across the country, have seen an uptick in people posting messages online and on social media instead of calling 911. These platforms are not monitored 24/7, and in times of emergency, every second counts. Please remember that the Glendale Heights Police Department cannot take a crime report over social media. In order to make a report, please contact the non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. And if you need immediate assistance or have an emergency, please remember to always call 911 and don't rely on social media. Join village president Choudhary Ma Koker and the village board for a special public input meeting as we look towards the future of Glendale Heights. This meeting will be held on Saturday, July 20, January 29, starting at 10:00 a.m. in the Village Hall Council Chambers, or join us on Zoom. This invitation is extended to all residents, business, and agencies that are invested in Glendale Heights community. This is time for those who dedicated to improving Glendale Heights to express their concerns, ask questions, and give their input on projects, programs, and services you want to see to help to make Glendale Heights a great community for all people. For more information, please contact the village president's office at 630-909-5302. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Siddiqui?
Yeah. Before I start reading like a school kid, I just want to clarify, I'm wearing a hat and it is due to the medical reason. The village of Glendale Heights is collecting broken or unused holiday lights. Lights can be dropped off at the Public Works Garage located at 1635 Glen Allen Road on weekdays from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Lights accepted for recycling include all colors and lengths of mini lights, C7 lights, C9 lights, rope lights, and LED lights. For more information on holiday lights recycling, please call 630-260-6000. As a reminder to residents, please do not shovel, snowblow, or plow any snow into village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow or safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070.
Trustee Light, please.
Thank you. The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, February 5, at the Center for Senior Citizens, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302. Thank you.
You're welcome. Clerk Schmidt, please.
Join the village of Glendale Heights in celebrating National Salute to Hospitalized Veterans Month by participating in the Valentine's for Veterans collection efforts. Annually, the village delivers beautifully written and decorated Valentine cards collected from the community to Illinois veteran homes and veteran hospitals. Drop off your Valentines at Village Hall by Wednesday, February 2, to ensure timely delivery for Valentine's Day. Please do not decorate your cards with glitter, include social media contact information, or include envelopes with the cards. Should you have any questions, please call Nicole Lewis at 630-909-5327. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Maritato, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In cooperation with the Center for Senior Citizens, the DuPage County Senior Citizen Council is now offering a senior citizen handyman program for residents of DuPage County. The cost is $40 an hour for a handyman to come to your own home for most small repairs. Senior citizens must be 60 years of age or better. To contact the director of home maintenance, please call the DuPage Senior Citizen Council at 630-620-0804, or Ralph King at 630-546-0627. Keep your New Year's resolution going with a fitness membership at the Sports Hub for the remainder of January. Noon, existing fitness member can take advantage of our January Fitness Special. For a regular annual membership, pay just $160 for the whole year, which normally costs $200. Also available is two-months membership available for $35, which normally costs $40. Stop by the Sports Hub, it'll cost 630-260-6060, to find out how you can get in shape and start feeling great. Keith, are these flyers, are they posted, or?
They are. They're at the front desk and on the website, and we post it on Facebook, so.
All righty, thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Pocak, please.
The police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during snowfall. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as the snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village streets for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more, and there's no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department, non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Schroder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Register today for the Mother-Sun Dance. Moms, put on your dancing shoes, and boys, come show off your best dance moves at our Coastal Craze themed dance. Enjoy an activity-filled evening, complete with dinner and dessert. The Mother-Sun Dance will be Friday, February 25, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club. Please register by February 20. The registration fee is $55 for residents and $65 for non-residents, and $26 for each additional child. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. And then, we have the dance the night away at the annual Daddy-Daughter Dance on Saturday, February 26, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club. We will be on a Coastal Craze for this evening, this year's theme. The evening will include dancing, dinner, and every participant will receive a souvenir to remember the night. Register by February 20. The registration fee is $55 for residents, $65 for non-residents, and $25, $26 for each additional child. For more information, call the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Schroder. Next, there is a call for a special village board meeting by the village president and board of trustees on Saturday, January 29, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. to allow residents, businessmen, and agencies invested in the Glendale Heights community to express their concerns, ask questions, and give their input towards helping make Glendale Heights a great community for all people. We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item? Yes.
Joanne, this is the time, right?
Please say your name and your address.
My name is Michael Schroder, 200 Fulton Street, West Chicago, Illinois. Okay, I'm Mike Schroder from Ed and Sons Auto Body, as you guys know. I'm here regarding my special use permit. The problems seem to be the fire department. Anyways, I've made access to all my doors at my building. The east side of my building is all clear of U-Hauls. So, I mean, there's no fire real issue. I'm probably one of the oldest businesses in the city of Glendale Heights. I mean, I need this permit. I have no issues with any of my neighbors, and I'm coming to the board to ask you to please give me this special use permit, okay? I just need your vote for this permit, please, that's all. Any questions? Okay, thank you, guys.
You're welcome. You have the consent agenda before you. Acting village administrator, Doug Flint, please read the consent agenda.
Consent agenda?
Oh, excuse me, is there any other? From the public, sorry, yes, Mr. Flint, go ahead.
Number one, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of January 6, 2022. Number two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of January 6, 2022. Number three, approval of the council payable listing of January 20, 2022, in the amount of $6,978,844.98. Number four, a motion to approve pay request number nine to Klaus Brothers Incorporated for the Cameron Park Improvement Project in the total amount not to exceed $74,709. And number five is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Pat?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Second.
The consent agenda, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Old Business, there is a request to waive first reading on Old Business, item number Is there a motion to waive first reading on Old Business, item three? Trustee Pat?
Motion to waive first readings and business number two through 10. Oh.
No, we're on Old Business.
Yes.
Back up.
Yeah, I'm backed up, I'm sorry. Motion, okay, so moved.
Business item number three.
Old Business, item three.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Schmidt, please.
None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pocak?
No.
Trustee Schroder?
What are we voting on? Are you on?
A motion to waive first reading on Old Business 3.
Trustee Schroder, sorry, trustee Schmidt? Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
No.
Trustee Maritato? Motion failed.
Is it denied?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is denied.
Mayor, do you mind if I say something about the next two ordinances? Couple trustees have asked me since we've gotten up with the dais. So, it is a bit confusing. The first ordinance that comes before you is an ordinance to deny the two amendments for Ed and Sons for the conditional use permit for outdoor storage of vehicles. So, if you vote in favor of that ordinance, item number two, you will be effectively voting to deny the conditional use to Ed and Sons for the outdoor storage of vehicles. So, if that ordinance passes the denial, you will never even get to the item three, which is the approval. If, in fact, you vote against the ordinance to deny, you will then have to take up the next ordinance, which is to approve. So, is that as clear as mud to everybody?
No, that wasn't clear. Say it again, darling.
Sure. So, the first item is an ordinance to deny the application for Ed and Sons.
Right.
And if you vote aye, you're voting to deny that application and not grant Ed and Sons the right to store outdoor vehicles.
If you vote yes.
Yes, 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 that is correct. And if that carries the day, if there's four votes to deny that ordinance, ordinance which would be ordinance 2022-404, you would never even call the next ordinance. So, why don't we just do that ordinance first and see how that goes before we even talk about the next one? So now, Mayor, if you would read item two.
Item two, an ordinance to deny an application for two amendments to the previously approved conditional use permit for outdoor storage of vehicle on the premises, commonly known as 387 East North Avenue in the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, at -1 Sons Auto Body, ordinance 2022-04. So, when you are saying yes, mean you are denying that request, you know?
So, does somebody wish to make a motion with respect to this item, item two, to deny?
Yes, trustee.
So moved.
Moved, second.
Second.
Second, trustee Schmidt. Discussion?
Where's the second?
Are we gonna vote on it?
Siddiqui for discussion.
First discussion, if anybody wants to speak about the ordinance to deny.
Everybody voted already?
No, 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 no. This is just discussion on whether or not the ordinance to deny, if you want to say anything about that ordinance. Just discussion, the vote has not occurred.
I think I'm having a problem.
Go ahead, Mary Schroder.
Of course, you know I don't want to deny it.
I know.
Correct.
Trustee Schroder, yes.
Yeah, I, I'm hearing what you're saying.
All right.
If that was the case, and you did not want to deny this ordinance, you, yes, you would vote no.
All right.
Trustee Schroder? Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Epstein.
Trustee Maritato, that was a yes. Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Motion's denied.
Motion is denied.
Well.
Or the motion passes?
Means.
Meaning denial.
Being denied, sorry.
So, the motion passes, the ordinance to deny the amendments to Ed and Sons has passed, there's no need to take up item three to approve those amendments, it's now moot.
Moot, denied.
So, you can move on, Mayor, to new business.
New business, there is a request to waive first reading on new business, item two to 10. Is there a motion to waive first reading on business, item two to 10? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second?
There's a second.
Second?
Trustee, who's second?
Schmidt.
Trustee Schmidt, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
First reading is waived on new business items two to 10. Number two, an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit an establishment serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises located at 1210 Bloomingdale Road in the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Hannah's Lounge, from the January 6, 2022, COW, request to waive first reading, this is ordinance 2022-06. Can I get a motion to approve ordinance 2022-06? Motion, who's first? Pat, second, trustee Light. No discussion, none. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui? Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-06 is approved. Item number three, an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit an establishment serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises located at 1225 Glen Allen Road in the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Sabrina's Cafe, from the January 6, 2022, COW, request to waive first reading, this is ordinance 2022-07. First, motion, trustee Maritato.
So moved.
Second, trustee Light. No discussion, none. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-07 is approved. Item number four, an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit a bank drive-through facility for the property located at 567 East North Avenue in the village of Glendale Heights, Han-Tung-Tung Bank, from the January 6, 2022, COW, request to waive first reading, this is ordinance 2022-08. Trustee Pat?
So moved.
Second, trustee Siddiqui. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-08 is approved. Number five, an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit a restaurant with outdoor dining serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises located at 2260 Bloomingdale Road in the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Pronto's Restaurant, request to waive first reading, this is ordinance 2022-09. Can I get a motion to approve ordinance 2022-09? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Second, trustee Pocak.
I didn't say second.
Okay, go ahead.
He said second.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Light, second, because I saw your hand, you know. Can I get a, discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-09 is approved. Six, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Pronto's Restaurant located at 2260 Bloomingdale Road in the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Pronto's Restaurant, request to waive first reading, this is ordinance Can I get motion to approve ordinance 2022-10? Trustee Pocak?
So moved.
Second, trustee Siddiqui. Yes, yes, yes.
Do I, this is okay for every entertainment, every night of the week, right? I mean, whether he does it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, he can do it during the course of the week?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-10 is approved. Seven, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Jack's Pub and Grill located at 338 East Army Trail Road in the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Jack's Pub and Grill, request to waive first reading, this is ordinance Can I get a motion to approve ordinance 2022-11? Trustee Smith?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Light? Discussion? Yes. Yes.
Uh, Chief Pappas, have we had with regarding Jack's Pub, any issues with them?
Really, we really have not had a lot of issues, we had a fight that happened over the summer, but besides that, it was, has not been much there.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Anybody else? Um.
Just the same, same deal? With the entertainment?
I'm trying to recall the actual, because this is a renewal, this isn't a new one, um, oh, actually, thank you, uh, so it is Wednesday through Sunday nights for Jack's.
Okay.
So not seven days.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Muratato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven is approved, eight, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Schnitzel Plats located at seven hundred twenty-nine East North Avenue in the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Schnitzel Plats, request to waive first reading, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve, can I get a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve? Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Uh, trustee Siddiqui, second. Discussion. You're second?
No, no, I just discussed it. Um, Joanne, is this including the outdoor portion that they were having, so they're allowing to do it outside also?
Yes, I'm ready for you this time, uh, so it's actually, uh, seven days a week inside, and it was the, as you recall, you amended the entertainment permit to allow outdoor, uh, in the fall, so Saturdays, I'm sorry, on, um, Fridays, Saturdays, and from four to eleven, and Sundays, two to PM, and two to nine PM in September and October.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was included, that's all, thank you.
Yes, trustee Pojak.
Joanne, regarding the entertainment, uh, for the week, uh, for the fall, do they have to come back with?
No, that, this is, they, what was approved, uh, this is a renewal of what you approved last fall, that allows them to do that every fall.
With that big tent and everything?
They still have to apply for a temporary use permit, but they don't require village board approval, but they still have to apply for the temporary use, fire district still has to apply at police department, uh, building department still has to go through that process.
So they'll have to come before us for that then, right?
They will not.
No?
No, temporary use of permit is, is an allowable, a tent for that outdoor dining is allowable.
Well, the fire department will have to inspect that, though.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Muratato.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve is approved, nine, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Bright Lights Theater, Incorporated, located at thirty-five dash fifty-three East North Avenue in the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Bright Lights Theater, Incorporated, request to waive first readings, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, discussion. Yes, Mr. Light.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh, actually, it's a discussion, you know, there's no discussion? Okay, roll call vote, uh, trustee Light is first.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Muratato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen is approved, ten, an ordinance to amend section four dash three dash thirteen, entitled number of licenses of chapter three, entitled liquor control of title four, entitled business and license registrations of the village code of the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, number of licenses, request to waive first reading, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, can I get a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, trustee Light.
So moved. Second.
Trustee, uh, Pat Muratato, second, discussion. Yes, trustee Pat.
Doug, I don't know if you get this, or Bill gets, is there, is there a number of license we do a year, I mean, is there like, ten, and then we don't do no more after ten?
I can actually answer that, um, the village only has the exact number of licenses as we has, uh, have establishments, and every time an establishment closes, that license automatically goes away, uh, and then every time you approve a new establishment that you want to have alcohol, you need to create a new license, so there's never any licenses just floating around to be used, they come and go exactly at the same time as the businesses.
There's no defined number of license we can issue, so, I mean, every gaming establishment has to have a liquor license, so we've, we've added a liquor license per gaming establishment, right, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't, uh, max out a number at like, ten or fifteen or twenty.
Okay.
It's based on the establishment and.
I was just curious, a place closes down, what do we do, we take that liquor license back?
Yep.
Yes.
In, in this case, it's, it's pronto's, and reissuing one to a, to a new owner.
That's why I was curious, because.
Yeah, it went away, and then it came right back.
Came right back, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Ro, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Muratato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fourteen is approved. Number eleven, village president's veto of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero one, an ordinance to approve and authorize the execution of a cricket field uses agreement with American Cricket Conference, Incorporated, for cricket fields at Camera Park. I am using my veto power to veto the decision of the board of Glendale Heights granting or awarding cricket grounds to Mr. Barry, uh, relative of our very dear trustee, Mr. Siddiqui, and I want to read that, exercising my presidential veto right, sorry, uh, presidential veto right, from President Choudhury Amey Koker, using his veto right against the decision made by the board of the village of Glendale Heights in the last board meeting on Thursday, January sixth, twenty twenty-two, for the following reason, number one, board established committee in violation of established rules and regulations, and encroached the powers of the president of Glendale Heights, appointing trustee Mary Schroder, trustee Chester Pojak, Doug Flint, and Keith Knott, board has deliberately excluded the president from convening committee as well as the committee process, number two, board is in clear violation awarding the cricket contact, contract to Sahil Bari, ACC, under the equal protection clause of the US Constitution, as well as the Constitution of the state of LNI, number three, there are offers from other cricket clubs, for instance, Midwest Cricket Club has offered forty-nine thousand dollar plus regular maintenance fee for the three cricket grounds in Camera Park, the board has accepted fifty percent less, approximately thirty thousand dollar less than the offer obligated by Midwest Cricket Club, the extra money could have been used for the kids, for the seniors, and/or law enforcement, number four, because of the board of trustees biased and prejudiced decision, the residents of the Glendale Heights are forced to pay approximately ten thousand dollar for the legal fees, uh, to the village attorney, this, this issue is still not resol- resolved, and now the village potentially has a lawsuit against it, number five, some trustees have mentioned during board meeting that Sahil Bari, owner of ACC, is our family member, and has been helping me and other elected officials in the election, number six, trustee Siddiqui is a brother-in-law of the Sahil Bari, owner of ACC, he promoted and favored his relatives' interest over the interest of the resident of Glendale Heights, and he fought, and paved the way to get the cricket contract for Sahil Bari, trustee Muhammad Siddiqui took oath for his office that he would serve the Constitution faithfully and honestly, and the residents of the Glendale Heights, but he served his relatives' interests over the community of Glendale Heights' interest, he has failed in performing his legal and constitutional duties, number seven, the present board of trustees do not represent the will of the community, but they are serving their own and mutual interest, this list goes on and on, and for the sake of time and argument, I do not wish to extend this list, sign by Choudhury Amey Koker, president of Glendale Heights. Yes, trustee Pojak.
I'm making a motion to override, uh, Mr. Koker's motion.
Second.
Second, Mr., trustee Siddiqui, relative of Sahil Bari.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Muratato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion is carried, twelve, a resolution creating an ad hoc committee, ad hoc compensation committee for the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, this is res- resolution twenty twenty-two dash R dash fifteen, can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash R dash fifteen, this, uh, trustee Light.
So moved.
Second, trustee Pojak.
Second.
Discussion. None.
Go ahead, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
What is this committee gonna consist of, doing what?
Uh, you are on the board, on the committee, and, uh, Mary, uh, trustee Mary's on, and, uh, um, there are two other members.
Mayor, if you'd like to maybe just read the resolution, and make clarify some of the questions the elected officials have? Would you like me to read it, sir?
Do we have to read that?
No, you don't have to.
No, we don't have.
You can, I mean, if.
I mean, if you want, you can, otherwise, we don't have to.
Yeah, I like to.
Established, you know?
Okay.
Yeah. Whatever you wanna do.
No, we like to, we like some explanation, yes.
Mayor? Uh, this, this motion was moved by Siddiqui trustee, and he need explanation, explanation for that. You moved, trustee Siddiqui, you moved.
I didn't move. You have to.
Here?
Yes. Maybe the board might wanna know what this committee's about?
This committee will discuss the stipend, the salaries, the wages, whatever you can say, you know, my, my list fee, you know, received by the elected officials. That will.
Okay, thank you. Yes, who else is gonna be on this committee?
Uh, trustee, uh, Mary, trustee Pojak. Yeah, I know us, and, uh, police chief, Pappas, and, uh, Bill Polling, finance director, hello, Mr. Bill? Yes. Can I, can I get a motion to approve?
We have a motion on the floor.
Okay, already there.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, right?
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Okay, uh, discussion. No discussion, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Muratato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes, resolution twenty twenty-two dash R dash fifteen is approved, we now go on the public discussion of agenda items, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item? Yes.
Ed Pope Wayne Avenue, uh, I probably should ask this before you voted on it, but I think it goes to you, Joanne, um, new business, number three, Sabrina's Cafe, at the last meeting, you said that they were asking to subdivide that, the building, which, the whole building's not as big as this room, now they wanna add liquor, um, have you guys looked to make, I mean, there's no parking in that parking lot, they, it's tiny as heck, and then if you're gonna subdivide it into two businesses, and you're going to add liquor, will they meet the ordinance criteria, because that, that's very small with very little parking?
It is very small, but yes, it does comply with the, uh, code regulations for the parking standard.
Even if you subdivide?
Mm-hmm, the parking actually stays the same, it's based on the square footage, it's not based on whether there's one, presumably one larger business versus two smaller businesses, still has the same occupancy, so it does still meet the, the parking requirement, uh, it is, the proposal is for a gaming cafe, and they typically don't have a, a whole, they're not very crowded, you know, basically, there's six games in the building, not that many other people come, so there was not a concern that it was going to be, it's not a bar, it's not going to have entertainment, it's not gonna have any of those items.
But it's so hard to get in and out of there, when, when it was a currency exchange, I would use it once in a while, it's so difficult to get into off of Glen Allen Road, it's impossible to get out of unless you wanna go north, um, it, it's, and then if you're gonna subdivide that into two businesses with adult entertainment, whatever you wanna call it, and liquor, that's, uh, I don't know, it seems like an awful lot for that tiny building, but if, I mean, if they meet the ordinance.
They do meet the ordinance.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Kim Darlin, Greenbrier subdivision, can we have Doug read the, uh, resolution creating an ad hoc compensation committee, I understand you guys all know it, but we should know it, we as the residents should know it, so Doug, I think you said you had something for that?
Let me get back to it. Resolution creating an ad hoc compensation committee for the village of Glendale Heights, whereas the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, finds it necessary and desirable to create an ad hoc committee for the purpose of reviewing the compensation of village officials contained in section one dash seven dash eight, entitled compensation of chapter seven, entitled village officers and personnel, of title one, entitled administration, uh, one dash seven dash eight, now therefore be it resolved by the president and board of trustees of the village of Glendale Heights in DuPage County, Illinois, section one, the facts and statements contained in the preamble to this resolution are found to be true and correct, and hereby adopted as part of the resolution, section two, there's hereby created an ad hoc committee to be known as the ad hoc compensation committee, such committee shall be comprised of four members, which members shall be as follows, village trustee Chester Pojak, village trustee Mary Schroder, appointed by village president with the advice and consent of trustees, and finance director Bill Polling, and chief of police George Pappas, quorum of three members of the committee shall be required to conduct business, the committee shall have responsibilities for reviewing section one dash seven dash eight of the village code, making recommendations to the village board, after the committee has made its recommendation to the village board, the committee will have concluded its business, and the committee shall dissolve, resolution shall be in full force and effect upon passion and approval and accordance with law. with law.
So then, to be clear, that's for the stipends? Is that for stipends for the trustees?
One dash seven dash eight is the compensation section of our code for elected officials and appointed officials.
Okay. And my second question was, you have on here the nepotism.
They send the committee to the.
Committee to the hall.
Yeah.
Send the committee to the hall.
Oh, okay.
Next. Thank you.
It's not nepotism, is, that has been passed, you know, nepotism, yes.
Good evening. Christopher Epstein, Club Drive, Glendale Heights, Illinois. With regards to this ad hoc committee, it seems there shouldn't be any members of the board on it because they're voting and doing the committee for their own compensation. That's, they should be removed from the committee or not allowed to do any votes. You should have actually residential people in there or people outside that are not being affected by this particular. My my personal feeling, too, is that all of your stipends should be removed completely. Why? Because you're not acting in the best interest of this village when you take twenty to thirty thousand dollars less in income that we could have gotten from, you know, an ordinance with the cricket fields. So maybe it should come out of your pockets. Mr. Poyek, that would be the biggest chunk out of your paycheck every month with regards to it. So my feelings are, is let's get rid of all the stipends. You only get paid for your your board meetings, and let's see who shows up for all those other events and everything within the community. I also thought it was a very big disturbance to Ed and sons not allowing them to have their additional parking with regards to it. There was no reason why Mr. Siddiqui needed, that he wasn't related to him or anything like that. Mary, you're the one that should have basically passed on that particular ordinance because of the fact that you are related to your son and should have basically abstained from the vote. In most cases, you guys are not following general decorum with regards to if you are related to somebody or something, that you should be passing on it and not voting on it. But by voting on it either way, I don't care which way, you are sending a message that you don't care what the village and what's good for the village itself. But how many thousands of dollars are we throwing away? There are other things. I was recently at the restaurant for the golf course. That meeting went very well, in my opinion, and it was handled very, like a normal group, things that should have been done and things like that. But my feelings are, is that let's get rid of all the stipends. And then we'll see how dedicated some people are to this village with regards to their duties as a trustee. Thank you for your time. Mayor?
Jamal on Zoom would like to speak?
Okay.
Jamal?
Good evening. Can you guys hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Jamal Nasser. I'm at two zero zero nine Quaker Hollow Lane at Streamwood. I'm saying something related to agenda number eleven and the kind of a tussle that I have seen between the board. My daughter got married last year, and we were looking for banquet halls, and we did not get the banquet hall on Glendale Heights because you guys don't allow the food from outside. And so it was just, you know, we did not even consider it. And I heard that there was a proposal to change that policy, and that will bring the village a lot of money. But I understand that I don't see that on the agenda. If so, when will that, there will be a whole, you know, paper written on it, the whole research was done. And that is still sitting with the golf committee. It has not made this far to the board. And if you guys will approve that, that will bring the village a lot of money. I heard, Mayor, just Mayor, I have heard about that banquet hall, that you are leasing that to some restaurant also, and that deal is also like, you know, pennies. So you are going to lose money on that, too. We have a big community at Glendale Heights in which, you know, my age group, I know a lot of friends and families in Glendale Heights that have kids that are age of, you know, marriage. They're looking for good deals. So I hope that you guys will consider the banquet hall situation and make good policies on it and bring it on the agenda. There's a subcommittee for it, and there's work done on it. So hopefully that will take care of, you know, the money that you guys are losing. You will make a lot of money, you know, this public money that has made this banquet hall. Don't leave it out to some private restaurant. Thank you.
So Jamal, at the golf course committee meeting, it was decided to allow catered food. There's pricing for that on our website. A final determination has not yet been made on next steps with the actual facility. But at the golf course committee, they did commit to allowing catered food to be in, and the pricing of that is on our website.
Well, good to hear that, but I want to make sure that it is not leased out to some, you know, restaurant for a cheap price. It's a public asset, and it has a very good potential to make a lot of money. If we just lease it for pennies, again, the village will lose a lot of money. So I want it to be on the agenda next time, you know, so that it can, it's discussed that whether it's going to be leased out or whether the city is going to have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coker?
Yes.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm not saying anything.
No problem.
Anybody else on Zoom?
There's nobody else on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay. There is no executive session. I would like to have motion to adjourn. Our trustee Schmidt.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second, trustee Light. Roll call, vote.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratano?
Yes.
Trustee Pochak?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Light, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
Well, thank you. All right. I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting for Thursday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-two to order. Will the clerk please note who's present?
Noted.
Marie?
Mr. Light, trustee Light, I would like to address the board. Glendale Heights has posted it strives to improve the quality of life to all of its residents and commits to serve, protect, and provide a high standard of services and programs through the cooperative efforts of its residents, businesses, employees, and elected officials. Many of you have seen from recent board meetings, cooperation and collaboration do not seem to be words in the mayor's vocabulary. His actions also include name-calling, intimidation, and threats. His style of management is dictatorship. His goal is to divide and conquer the board. He has publicly called residents' names at meetings. When an employee questioned why he was violating a village policy, the mayor immediately started yelling at the employee and telling them they were disobedient and disrespectful. He has also called me disrespectful. He has brought employees near tears with his ranting and raving. He has created a toxic work environment by deflecting his lack of answers and morphing them into an attack on others. He has violated the cardinal rule of discussing employees in a public forum. He not only bases his comments on his personal feelings toward the employees, he also does it by including the employees' names. Please keep in mind that I live here and I have the same rights as any other resident. I am filing a FOIA with the village publicly because the mayor appears not to believe in transparency. I am doing this without the help or knowledge of any administrator, board member, or employee. The Attorney General believes that an open, honest, and accountable government is the cornerstone of a democracy, which can be achieved only through the free, open exchange of information between government and the public. The residents elected their trustees so that they may have a voice in the governing of their village. Because the mayor does not demonstrate any desire to have open and honest government, I believe the onus is on me to request information that I believe speaks volumes. The mayor does not only keep information from the public, he also keeps it from the entire board. I can honestly say that I sent an email to Mr. Coker. I don't even receive the courtesy of a reply. Under FOIA, public records means all records, reports, forms, writings, letters, memoranda, books, papers, maps, photographs, microfilms, cards, tapes, recordings, electronic data processing records, electronic communications, recorded information, and all other documentary materials pertaining to the transaction of public business regardless of physical form or characteristics, having been prepared by or for, or having been or being used by, received by, in the possession of, or under the control of any public body. The village provides the computer for these records. Therefore, they belong to the village. I'm also requesting his handwritten notes. Under FOIA, I am requesting any and all information regarding the Friends of Pakistani Independence Day celebration at Camera Park on August fourteenth and fifteenth and the carnival on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. The applications were filled out on August twelfth by Chicago and Schaumburg residents. The village has not been reimbursed for any costs associated with these events. The bill for the rental of equipment was one thousand one hundred five dollars. Expenses related to August sixteenth were four hundred sixty dollars and forty-four cents. The total was one thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-four cents. They were billed on August eighteenth, and payment was due by September seventeenth. The village has not received any payment to date. I would like to know if payment terms were discussed or agreed upon with the mayor. In addition to the rental of equipment, the village paid groundskeepers and maintenance workers on an hourly basis and had salaried employees at these events. These out-of-town groups used Camera Park for free for three days, and our residents paid the tab. The mayor shares a secretary with the board and clerk. Mr. Coker has had her virtually cloistered so she could take notes for every one of his meetings with employees, residents, and people with whom he has done business. I'm asking for all information related to her resignation, which occurred last week. She worked here for about three months, and I am requesting information on all payments made to her upon her departure. In addition, I am requesting a copy of the exit interview and want to know if she is eligible for unemployment benefits or if she has received an extension of insurance benefits. Under FOIA, I am also requesting copies of receipts with all details, including names of diners for the two thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-nine cent credit card charges made between January twenty-fifth through December third. I am also requesting copies of all credit card charges made by Mr. Coker from December fourth, twenty twenty-one through January fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The purpose of these meetings should also be included. I'm asking the administration, IS department, and the PD to ensure that no files are destroyed or erased. Now that there is a FOIA, the records may not be altered in any way. Mr. Coker, please take note of the comments about you on social media. We've had enough.
I will respond to this.
Marie, could I get a copy of that, please, for a record?
Village clerk Marie Smith. Number one, she has been getting five thousand dollars as a collector. She is not entitled to that. She is not performing function as a.
Can we add that for something? I'd like to keep it going. The next part is, can.
I have filed the FOIA.
Can we have any additions?
No, no proof, no standing, no nothing.
I'll put that, I'll put that on addition.
And she is not first time when I hired one.
Chester, hey. Oh, hey, Chester. Go ahead.
Back to blue.
Back to blue, okay. Back to blue. Mayor, I got you down for that in a second. Anyone else, any other additions?
Trustee Light, a deal is on Zoom. Would like to talk under public discussion.
Okay, well, let me get the additions, but we'll get that in a minute for public discussion in a second. No other addition, back to blue, that was it? All right, we're good on that. Okay, public discussion. Adeel, would you like to go ahead?
Please take your mask off when you speak so we can.
Sorry.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good evening to everybody attending the meeting, the board of trustees, Mr. Mayor. My name is Adeel, eleven seventy-four Glendale Heights. I joined the meeting thinking about talking about something else, but I would pick up where our village clerk left. Is there anybody from the finance department attending the session tonight who can confirm on the August fourteen charges? Because as far as I know, because I've been a part of American Cricket Conference who has been dealing with the village, the payment is supposed to be paid in net thirty days, if that is correct, with the village? And if this is correct, that we haven't been paid, this is the village's money, and Mr. Mayor's friends, as Marie rightfully said, came in from outside, from Chicago, Streamwood, and other areas, and used our facility for three days and enjoyed themselves, and the village hasn't been paid yet. Second of all, I think Mr. Mayor's stipend, when I bought it up last week in the committee on the whole meeting, were unpaid. And Mr. Epstein, in reply to that, bought up the stipends for all the other trustees. If we start comparing apple to oranges, it will be a ridiculous meeting which will last till one o'clock in the morning, and I don't think anybody has time for that. I don't believe any of the trustees have been meeting with the governors of any other countries, any other city. Mr. Mayor has been doing that and charging the citizens for that. It is the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and some dollars, which were unpaid last week. How come it got approved and got paid to Mr. Mayor? He hasn't justified billing the village that amount of money. Because in his reply, which is in recording and on YouTube as a database, which can be used against him, he himself irritated in reply that it was Mike Marin's fault because he said, yes, he can charge. So he accepted that he made a mistake, and he is willing to make a correction. Whereas what I've found out, that he has accepted the payment on that. So which one of your statement, Mr. Mayor, I would like you to respond to this, please, is correct? Would you like to correct your mistake? Or would you like to keep that money which has been paid?
Adeel, do I, can I give, I mean, the questions that you were asking, can I clarify what you're, I mean, you asked several different questions in statement form. I'm not 100% sure what the question is, except for the first one.
Two questions. The payment arrangement for the August 14 Pakistan Day arrangements should have had been net 30 days and should have had been paid within the 30 days.
All right, can we address that first off, one at a time, so I can keep note here? Can we do that, Doug, Bill?
Yeah, so when we work with groups that come in and work with the village on special events, they're, sometimes they're not-for-profits, sometimes they're groups here to do rentals, sometimes there's, you know, they're, we have long-term relationships with them, depending on the group. We don't normally, as a rule, hawk that different groups for payment. We've sent them a bill, we've sent them a follow-up bill, but they're a group that's trying to generally do something good for the community, and we don't generally go after them like we would some other vendor that hasn't paid a bill to the village. The next time that they come in to do something, we would say, you owe us this money or we're not going to do business with you, right? We've sent follow-ups. We don't generally, as a rule, to groups that rent from us and are part of doing positive things for the community, hawk them feverishly and charge them late fees for money, just kind of as a rule. Is that correct, Bill?
That's correct.
Does that help, Adil, does that help your question?
That helps, but I would like to know how strong of a relationship do we have with this association which came in and hosted this event last year? Because I think this was the first time. I don't think we have prior experiences with them. Because I'm talking from experience. Before that, we were the ones who were doing Pakistan Day mail-in. We were the ones who was renting it out, we were the ones who was paying the village. It was not these folks which came in last year. So you just said, Doug, that we do honor a relationship which we have had with the vendors who are doing some service to the community. Yeah, they did some service, they made some money probably off of it. I don't know, I did not attend to that, but for me, they were pretty new. So what sort of a relationship are we talking about here?
Well, I mean, I don't want to get into a back-and-forth here in the meeting, but, you know, we know who the parties are, we know how to get a hold of them, and it really, you know, we're not going after, you know, a group for a bill of, you know, it's a thousand dollars, still a thousand dollars. Don't get me wrong, it's still a thousand dollars, but we've sent them two bills and we're waiting for payment.
Exactly, yes, sorry, $1,500 to be exact.
Yeah, two different organizations, but you're right, $1,500.
So that's one thing. And then my second question is, when I raised the stripen issue in the last board meeting, you second that it has not been paid yet. Mr. Mayor himself said, but so how come it got paid when questions were raised, even Board of Trustees had some questions about what he has billed? I do not understand the service, this great service our current president is doing by meeting officials of PTI, which stands for Pakistan Tarikinaf, who's a ruling party in Pakistan. And then what service is it doing to our community when he's meeting with the governor of Punjab? And then what services is he doing when he's meeting KESO Cricket League for four times and then billing $50 to the residents? Because this money is not coming out of villagers' pocket. It's not coming out of any employee's pocket or the police department's pocket. It's coming out of residents' pocket. I think we pay enough in Glendale Heights that we are doing this $7,800 stripen for meeting somebody who does not even matter.
So, Adil, let me answer you this way. The whole purpose of the resolution that was passed earlier was to address these issues and to come up with a better way of compensating our elected officials. I will tell you that, generally speaking, the submissions from the elected officials for their stipend payments are within the policy of the village. There's been a couple that have been outliers. You can, anybody can make an argument on the appropriateness of certain items that have been put in for repayment. That's a whole separate issue than if what they were doing is within the policy. And the policy, within a couple of things that have been returned, they're following it across the board. So the whole purpose of the committee that was just formed earlier today was to address whether it's the appropriate thing to move forward with the stipend payments and other compensation to elected officials.
No, no, I understand, Doug, but my question is, what you are saying is completely okay with me for future references, because that's what's addressing in future. I'm talking about what happened in the past. Two weeks ago, the stripen was not paid. It got paid very quickly in these last 10 days. What you are saying, I completely agree with it, I'm not against it, that the committee has been formed, they will look into it, that's fine. And when the person himself on video admitted that he made a mistake by putting those things in the stripen and charging the village, and it was approved by the ex-administrator who was working with the village at that point in time, and he would like to correct it, still he took that money.
So it got paid out with payroll?
Opportunity so that he can at least correct himself. At least give the poor guy some opportunity. Let him correct himself, let him return that money. I would like to ask him, would he like to do that? Because I don't know which one is right. Was he right the last time when he was talking on camera or is he right now?
Mr. Adil, number one, you said that there was three days' function. It was not three days, it was for about six hours, number one. Number two, I went to that function as a resident of Glendale Heights. And Mr. Siddiqui went to the same function as a trustee from District 6. He has the same duties and obligation. He's from Pakistan, I'm from Pakistan. I attended that function, he attended that function. Number three, if you want, you can have, you can come and see me in my office and I can give you all the answer. Listen, listen, listen to me, you know. I can give you all the answer and I tell you all those stipends I have received, those are valid, 100% stipends, valid, not even 1% wrong.
Mr. Mayor, you yourself on video, which is not, which is not recorded by.
Listen, listen, if you want, listen. Listen, listen, the thing is, listen, if you listen, you know.
You yourself admitted that you made a mistake.
Listen.
And now you are saying something else.
Okay, if you listen, you know. Number one, I did, I admit that I said, but when I checked that, you know, that was valid stipend, you know, valid, 100%. Under our rules, regulation, 100% valid. I don't want to accuse other person for nothing. I do want to have conversation. If you want, you as a resident, you can come to my office. And I have seen lot of trustees, they come to me in my office and they charge money for that. I have not charged any money for that. Some people, trustee, they go to different meeting, not paid. That's the reason we have established this committee for compensation, you know.
So if I come to you and meet you in your office, will you charge the village for that?
No.
Okay, but you have charged. But you have charged when you met Mr. Epstein twice.
Listen, 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 Mr. Epstein came for a village business that was scheduled meeting and that is paid meeting, you know.
What village business? He's a resident, he does not work for the village.
Listen, if you come, you know, I can talk with you. My village acting administrator, he can answer you some questions.
Guys, hey, guys, could I have just a little bit of silence here for a minute?
This conversation can go on for quite some time. Adil, I would suggest if you'd like to come in and maybe sit down with the mayor, I'm sure one of us can come with you or, you know, discuss, you know, further, getting more information for you, but this we can get done in a much quieter manner and a little bit easier that way. Would that work out okay for you?
Yes.
That's fine for me.
All right, Adil, that'd be great. Were there any other questions on that, Adil? You're good. Trustee Pat Meritado.
I just want to know when are we going to start doing some village business? And my second thing is that for about four months now, that's all I'm hearing about the Pakistani community. I love them all, but I'm getting tired of listening to the same thing while we got other minorities in this village by the ton. They're not the only people that we have in Glendale Heights. We have all kinds of diverse people. I want to run the village. So when are we going to sit down and start running the village instead of all this, I call it nonsense, but I don't know what you guys call it, I don't care. I don't care what you call it, but this is what I'm calling. I'm tired, I'm tired of listening about all this. I'm done, I'm done with, I'm done with cricket, I'm done with all this stuff. If it's up to me, I take that park, there'd be no cricket in that park at all. I take that whole park and give it to the residents who own it, who owns the park. Cricket don't own the park, baseball doesn't own the park. Nobody owns the park. The residents of this village owns the park. So you know what? I don't care about cricket. I don't care if they leave, they pay, I don't care about anything. Give it back to the residents. We can have picnics there, we can have, people can have family reunions there. They pay a permit and they get it. And you know what? I'm done, I'm done. I'm done, Mike.
I support you 100%.
I'm done.
Do we have any other public comment?
Marie Schmidt, I'd like a FOIA on everything under the previous administration.
Of course, you know, Mr. Epstein, we know who you are.
Yes, Christopher Epstein, Club Drive.
You have to say, you don't have to, it's optional on your address. I shouldn't say that to everybody. It's the Open Meetings Act only requires you to identify who you are, of course. We know who you are, but you still have to say for the record and for everybody that's listening, but you do not, it's optional on address.
Marie, I would like a FOIA on the complete records from the previous administrations, all from 2000 up through 2000. I got, let's go 2020, the election date. I'd like anything dealing with any of the trustees, previous past, any of the high executive salaries or anything like that.
He may not have any of those records.
Well, excuse me.
Mr. Epstein, can you just be a little bit more specific as to what you're looking for?
Well, I'm looking for, like she said, when she was requesting everything with President Kokar, I'd like everything with tapes, and you said you're supposed to have it in storage. You know, where is it?
No, we don't. We do destroy records, according to the Secretary of State Record Disposal Laws.
Okay.
Can you just define what you want?
You know, to that end.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Please do.
Put it in writing. Then it'll be so clear if you just put it in writing.
All right, I would like to, any conversations with any of the trustees with liking to see me move out of town?
Mr. Epstein, excuse me.
Excuse me, I'm up here. I am up here, this is my time to talk. Any trustees telling me to move out of town, be for the better? No, I'm getting my time now that I've lost for the last 20 years with the previous administration up here. At least Mr. Kokar is straightforward and up here, talking to people. And Trustee Meritado, I'm a little disappointed in you that you, with regards to cricket, you wanted nothing to do with it, but you overrode his veto of it.
I didn't say I didn't want anything to do with it, Chris. I'm just tired of listening about cricket for four months.
No, I understand.
That's all I said, I'm tired of listening to cricket for four months. We got a village to run.
Right.
There's other people in this village besides the cricket team.
Oh, yes, definitely. We had baseball. Yeah, we had baseball until 2010, until the previous administration.
You know that, right. You know what's going on.
Yeah, I know a lot what's going on.
Okay, then, okay.
And then other things, there's certain restaurants being suggested to get a contract out for the golf course. That was brought up in the meeting for those that attended, that one trustee suggested a certain restaurant be given a preference or a priority in getting that. And we all know it's on North Avenue, that hosted the previous administration's parties and everything like that. And also in, what I would like, Doug, in 2013, the day of the election, I'd like a listing of any police calls that were out that evening from 8:00 PM till 2:00 AM in the morning. I'd like to know how many calls went out, what they were for, for that particular day, because it is my understanding that I needed to see who it was and I wasn't given it by this administration here, Ms. Schmidt, when I requested it previously under a FOIA. But I would like it now, as of 2013, the day of the election, from 8:00 PM to 2:00 AM, I like the listing of the phone calls that were made into the village or any police calls with regards to, not necessarily a 911 call, but any traffic stops that day. Yes.
It might be tough.
Okay, well, that's, I'm just asking. All right, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein.
Anybody else from the public?
I just have a simple question. Kim from Greenbrier. Amendment to Village of Glendale Heights administration policy, nepotism policy? Is that somewhere to be seen?
That's coming up.
It's for discussion?
Yes, it's up for discussion.
Is it, yeah, I'd like a copy of it.
You want a copy of the nepotism policy?
Yes. Please don't tell me it's on board, Doc, because I can't find it.
I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll get a copy of it?
I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Hi, at Paul Wayne Avenue. My question, I have two things, but my first one's for the chief. Chief, there was a kind of a negative comment put on Facebook about the dispensary. It got taken down pretty quick and, but while it was up, it was overwhelmingly, the comments were in support of it, which I will say surprised me a little bit, not that I'm not, but I mean, it was pretty powerful, the people that were in favor of it. So my question to you is, have you gotten anywhere with the group that might be interested in coming here? Because, I mean, it's just such a huge tax revenue for us, and if the residents are going to support it, I mean, I think that's a good thing.
Yes, actually, both Joanne and I met with a business that's interested to come to town. They're looking at a couple locations, a few locations on Army Trail Road. We're working with them, we're working, it has to go through a planning commission first, so there's steps that we have to take, but there is a business, a reputable business that's really interested to coming to our town.
If I could add to that a little bit, I just want to be very clear that this required to, cannabis dispensaries are not currently permitted in the village. So that's what Chief Path was referencing, is that the Plan Commission on January 25th will be considering an amendment to the zoning ordinance. They'll make a recommendation to the village board to allow cannabis dispensing. Happy to share the staff report, it will be sent out tomorrow. That will allow cannabis dispensing in certain locations with a conditional use. So, and then it is open to everyone. Yes, we have been talking to one in particular, but any cannabis dispensary could apply for a conditional use within those parameters, very limited parameters. But we're not working specifically with one, it would be open for all.
So it'd be on RFP when it does open, or they can just apply?
Not at all, they could apply because it wouldn't be on village property. If the village, it was on village property, it would be an RFP, it would go through that whole thing. So all this would do is just allow it within the zoning district. So then any cannabis dispensing company could go find a location if it complies with the parameters, the restrictions, similar to a liquor license. Just kind of, very similar to that. They find a location, they go through the process.
Okay, I just wondered, because, you know, the Facebook comment was, started some real debate on there. It got very heated to the point where whoever the administrator was took it down, but out of the, I think there was over 70 comments, and more than 2000 were, you know, in favor.
Could you confirm it was on, not on a village page?
No, no, it was not on the village page. I think it's called What's Happening Glendale Heights. Somebody runs it, I don't know who. It was not, yes, I maybe, you guys know what I meant, but, yeah, in the public. It was not on the village's website, that was on the Facebook, What's Happening Glendale Heights. My other one is just a comment. Mr. Schmidt, Siddiqui, Light, Mayor Marie, Pat, Chester, Mary, and I. Mr. Schmidt, Siddiqui, Light, Mayor Marie, Pat, Chester, Mary, and I'd like to include Don Starino as well, even though he's taking a short break. You guys have such a hard job, and you know I support you guys wholeheartedly. I know how hard it is to do what you do, and you don't deserve any disrespect. I know how hard you guys are trying up there, so the infighting doesn't look good as to our residents, but I do want to commend you guys for, especially Pat standing up tonight, Marie standing up tonight, to, you know, get us back on track. I'm with Pat, is that, let's get back to village business, and, and you guys need to be there for us, you know, we're here, and unfortunately, most of the time, you just only hear the negative side. So I want to tell you, I appreciate what you do, because you guys, stipends aside, they're so small, that you're doing this out of the goodness of your hearts, not for money. In my, at least, that's my opinion and my hope, so I just want to give you guys a pat on the back for what you do do, and I, I hope you do get back on track, and I, I'm fair, I know you guys will, and put all this stuff behind, and, and we can move forward with, and be the great village that we are. So just my comment.
Ed, thank you, that's, that's definitely our goal, to move forward, and let's keep this moving. And with that being said, is there any other comment from the public? We're good online, nobody online to call?
No.
Okay. Well, let's move on to committee recommendations then. Plan Commission Recommendation, a recommendation to approve an application for an amendment to a previously approved High Grove West Plan Unit Development to allow eight additional designated drive-up stalls for online order pickup, eliminating four parking spaces for the property located at 175 West Army Trail Road, target. Do we have a motion? Trustee Schmidt.
Move that, we move it to the board with a recommendation, do concur.
I have a second. Chester.
Second.
Discussion.
If I could, just for the record, I was asked earlier if any of these parking spaces are taking up a handicap space?
They are not.
That was one of my questions, actually. Is there any other discussion? Bill, is that a, I'm not sure, or is that, okay. Trustee Meritato.
It doesn't have anything to do with this, I just want to, I want to apologize for my outburst, I just, I'm sorry about it, but I shouldn't have did it, because I'm elected first, so I should be the calm, but if people know me, you know, I start getting, people know me. All right, thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you, Pat, for clarification. I guess discussion's over on that particular item, right? Now, how about our, our recommendation for this, we have a first, a second, any other discussion on it? Being on?
Vote.
How about a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we have to do a roll call because of?
Oh, do we done? Probably should, it's just, yes.
Hey, let's do that, I like that. Let's do a roll call.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Absolutely.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pochek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, and we'll move that to the board with a recommendation to approve. Okay, number two, a Plan Commission Recommendation, another one here, a recommendation to approve an application for a conditional use in the C2 Community Commercial District to allow open lot sales as an accessory to use for the outdoor storage of an open-air unit, utility type trailers for the property located at 157 East North Avenue, Northern Tool and Equipment Company, Inc. Northern Tool and Equipment Company, Inc., yes, that's it. Do we have a motion? Mr. Meritato.
Will you say to move to the board, do concur?
Second, Bill, for a second. Discussion.
Excuse me, who seconded?
Rusty Pochek.
I didn't second it.
No, Schmidt.
No, it was discussion.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Discussion.
All right. Joanne, this is for you. I attend a Plan Commission, so I learn what's going on in this village, sort of residents know why I go to these meetings. I don't think anything was brought up about the signage on this, this new trailer that's going by Belly Foods.
Correct. The applicant has not, they've indicated that they may be requesting a variance for signage for Northern Tools, but they have not yet done so. So this is just for the conditional use for the outdoors sales lot for the trailers, but the building signage will be for you, will likely be before you shortly.
Okay, because I didn't hear anything about any signs.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other discussion? All right, no other discussion? How about a call for vote? Roll call vote.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pochek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder. Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
All right, and we will move that to the board with a recommendation, concur then. All right, discussion regarding amendment to the Village of Glendale Heights Administrative Policy, 403 AP Nepotism Policy. This is one you were talking about, Kim. Trustee Siddiqui, would you like to update us?
Thank you. Yeah, actually, I hear you add, when we presented this policy, and you want to add anti-cronyism, because I strongly believe in that, and that's the reason I brought this up, that we should add anti-cronyism also in that policy, because cronyism is the one which I'm seeing is more dangerous than the nepotism. So I would like the board to add, amend this policy and add anti-cronyism also, in addition with anti-nepotism.
So we looking for, we need a motion?
No, discussion, you know, let me, Mr. Trustee Siddiqui, we passed, you know, in last board meeting, nepotism policy, that happened first time in the history of Glendale Heights. That was brought, and that is sufficient, you know. If you are talking about cronyism, can you define what is cronyism, number one?
Yes.
Number two, listen, number two, can you tell me if any neighboring city or village has cronyism policy?
Okay, can I answer?
I need an answer for that.
Can I answer now?
Yes.
Can I, okay. So why you are so against adding anti-cronyism? It seems like you are against, I mean.
I'm not against.
It's, what is the, yeah.
I can't, I can't say.
All right, so are we looking?
Let him go.
Are we looking for a motion here? Is that what our?
Yes, motion to.
All right, so do we have a motion?
To.
Pat, to add?
Research.
Research, or is, can you clarify that?
Develop a policy.
Develop a policy? Is that what you?
Yeah, to add anti-cronyism in there.
Develop a policy to edit. Okay.
Okay, so, so what, what, what are we looking for? I want to make a motion.
We're making a motion to?
To add anti-cronyism in the existing anti-nepotism policy.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we, Pat, you?
I'll second it.
Second, okay.
All right.
Roll call.
So we can go on to a vote for that one, roll call?
Does he?
Oh, no, we, we need more discussion. Do we have any more discussion on this now we have it?
Yeah, I need an answer from Mr. Trustee Siddiqui, he has not answered. Can you please define cronyism, number one? Can you tell me any neighboring city, village has this policy, cronyism on their village? Just give me one example.
Okay. I know what anti-cronyism, and I know why you are opposing it.
Just give me definition of cronyism, you know.
I don't want to waste time of people with your questions, okay?
Want to waste time of the board who have this, is a vague idea.
Are you calling for?
It's a vague idea, if you have learned.
Are you calling for?
Constitution.
Are you calling for the vote?
Yes, I'm calling for the vote, yes, please.
All right, let's call for a vote. Marie, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pochek.
Absolutely.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor Coker.
It's a very vague and stupid idea.
We have motion on the floor, we need a vote.
No.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, we'll move that to the board. All right, we're, we're back on, we're back, we have no more.
One question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chester cannot, he said absolutely yes, absolutely no, that's not an answer, you guys, oh.
All right, move, I thank you, Chris, thank you very much. All right, back on to other, back to blue, is Chester, that was you?
That's, that's me. That's the blue. On January 7th, I attended a funeral for Sergeant Marlene Ritman, who was shot, gunned down and died. Her partner, Officer Tyler Bailey, 27 years old, is fighting for his life from his wounds, and recently was a newlywit for about three months, I believe. Chief Pappas sent a police car to represent Glendale Heights. Sergeant Mario Besso Pinto and I went to Olivet Nazareth University Auditorium in Burbane, Illinois. There we met Officer Gabby Nichols and Paulina, our newly sworn officer, for about two weeks or so. And in the auditorium, there was close to 500 or more officers from many, from Illinois and from many other states. That is how the police department pay respects to one of their fallen officers. After a solemn ceremony, there was a procession to Abe Lincoln Cemetery, along the very long route, on both sides of the road. Standing in five-degree temperature, it was cold out there, the citizens waved flags, hands over their hearts, saluted as the caravan went by. I never seen anything like this before, only on TV. To see this in person was very touching, and it was emotional for me, too. Glendale Heights was well representative, and it was an honor for me to attend. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate you allowing me to go along. It was quite eventful, thank you again.
And I thank you, Chester, for representing us. That was very nice of you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Chester.
And one other thing, I am not charging my, on my stipend.
Thank you for that.
All right.
Thanks.
I, being that we had no other, could I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait, I, I.
Oh, you want to add?
I just got one more thing to say.
Okay.
I want to say, I'm, I'm talking to the board, I'm talking to the mayor. We have petitioners out there that are doing business in town waiting for approvals.
Uh huh.
They had to sit through this whole meeting, listening to all of us speaking, which is not good for the village. They're sitting out there thinking, what kind of board is this? Everybody is fighting, everybody is not making any sense. And I'm including myself, because, I mean, this is the whole board, and we cannot be doing this when we have businesses coming before us for approvals, because they want to, they want to be in Glendale Heights to be a business and be one of, one of the residents in town. I mean, we can't be doing this all the time. We're not, we are not looking professional at all. So that, that's all I want to say. I want everybody to think about this, because the last four or five meetings has been nothing but chaos, and we have petitioners looking to work in this town, and it's, it's not, it's not a good, it's not a good site. So I'm done.
All right.